Commissioner's Board of Work Session, it is Wednesday, October 12, 2022. It is 1:03 PM, this is set to go until 1:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting, we're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on Thurston County YouTube Channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mencer, joining us via Zoom is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as a Director of Community Planning Economic Development, Joshua Cummings, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, as well as staff members joining us in the boardroom, as well as via Zoom. The topics on today's agenda is the A-19 wireless communication facilities.
Yeah, I think about every chair, you will hear about the docket item A-18 today. Although on the information provided to you, it states that the decision needed. The decision is not needed when you approve the revisions. The decision bullet is needed, perhaps you feel comfortable setting a public hearing. And that's the next step in the process. So with that, Josh or Caitlin, you want to start?
Go for it, Caitlin.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Caitlin Nelson, I am Associate Planner with Community Planning. And I also have Ken Fellman on Zoom with us, he is the project consultant. And I will share my screen from my PowerPoint, and please hold any of your questions for the end. Okay. The purpose of today's briefing is to provide an overview of docket item A-19 for the Wireless Code update, provide an overview of the Planning Commission recommendation, and request a direction to schedule a public hearing if you feel comfortable to do so. This update to the wireless code was specifically initiated in order to make our code consistent with federal laws. It's a complete repeal and replace of the wireless chapter. And the majority of the changes come down to one of these four interpretations of the federal law. It requires an expedited review of and approval of certain permit types if they're not considered a substantial change, which is defined in the draft code. It sets limitations on the timelines of review for other application types. It prevents government regulations that create any kind of gap in service in any given area. And it prevents government regulations based on environmental and health effects of radio frequency emissions. We also with this update want to ensure that the county is able to exercise what kind of authority we do have over the wireless applications. And that is largely based on requiring aesthetic design, requiring specific application materials, and allowing less restrictive timelines, and permitting different application types in different zones. The county began working on updating provisions in 2016, both with this wireless code and other regulations managed with Public Works, like the utilities code and franchise agreements. This update doesn't technically have a due date, however, having code that is out of compliance with federal law has made reviewing and processing applications very difficult for staff and for the applicants. It has also required a lot of time from the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney to guide staff on laws that we must follow, even if our code is not consistent with those requirements. There was a public hearing held on June 2nd, 2021, and that followed a couple of work sessions that we held with Planning Commission to explain the project. The community comments reflected a desire for a stakeholder committee group. That stakeholder committee formed and based on the board directions. It was limited to three meetings in 2021. And you received a community stakeholder memo provided by some of the participants as an attachment. The main item that stakeholder committee members agreed on was the prioritization of certain areas for allowing wireless facilities. And the Planning Commission agreed to changes that reflect that in the draft. Many of the community stakeholder concerns provided in the attached memo were outside of the scope of work of this project. Either because they weren't consistent with the federal law, or it's information that doesn't generally go in the zoning code and would instead be in something like street standards or franchise agreements. Or it's not consistent with our other permit types or review process. Or we discussed it and there was no direction to look into it further. We also held additional Planning Commission work sessions after the stakeholder committee was formed. And we had quite a few of them where we went over what was being requested with the consultant, and we clarified what changes in the draft would be consistent with federal laws and what would not. And then we received a Planning Commission recommendation. It recommended approval of the update by a majority vote, including the repeal and replace of the wireless communication chapter, and changes to the definitions chapter and special uses chapter, all within the zoning code. The Planning Commission Minority Report generally reflected the concerns provided in public comment and the community memo from the stakeholder committee. And for next steps, between now and the public hearing, staff would make a few changes to the draft code based on some legal feedback that we received. And then staff would also issue a CIPA. Planning Commission Chair Casino is also here. If you have any questions for him, I believe he's available to answer those. And then the next step would be to either request additional information that staff can bring back, or direct staff to submit an AIS to schedule a public hearing. So at this time, are there any questions? Or is there any specific information the board would like to see brought back? Can we stop sharing the PowerPoint?
Commissioner Edwards, any questions?
Well, about the only thing I'd really ask is it seems like we're up against the gun on following federal regulation. Is that the kind of direction we're getting from our council?
So we don't have a deadline for when we have to approve it, but it does make processing it difficult in the meantime.
Hey, Maya, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Can you engage a little more on that question in regards to the sideboards from the federal government that we're working with?
So we do periodically update our code regulations to be in compliance with not only state law, but with federal law. In this case, there are a number of federal court cases and federal regulations that have come down over the past, I want to say past decade or so, close to now. And the county is updating our code to be in compliance with those federal regulations. So while there is no hard deadline to bring our code up to date with those federal regulations, it does make processing of wireless permits difficult for our planning staff. And it leaves some ambiguity for applicants that come in. Essentially, our code is a little bit out of date. So we're making good effort to update this code so that it's an easier process for applicants and for our permit staff.
Maybe as a follow-up to that, ma'am?
Go ahead, sir.
Maya, are we in a situation where theoretically, or possibly, we could be responsible if we delayed an applicant from completing a project because we weren't up to speed? I remember something about the difficulties and timeliness of things. So I'm just wondering if we aren't exposed a little bit from a liability standpoint, if we impede progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. We do have Ken Fellman on the call, and he has his hand up, so I'm going to let him chime in on that question.
Maya and I haven't talked about this, but I suspected that I might be able to answer it easier than she would. Commissioner, in response to your question, there are federal shot clocks that are now imposed where the county is required to make a decision. And depending upon the kind of application, the shot clock is a little bit different. They vary between 60 days and 150 days. For many of those applications, if you don't comply with the shot clock, you can be taken to court, and the court might make a preliminary finding that the county was unreasonably delaying the action. For a limited number of applications or kinds of applications, failure to meet the shot clock could result in an application being deemed granted. I will tell you based upon my experience, and I think Kate probably has similar experience, that most of the time, while it feels like we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole until we update the code, staff has tried to do the best that it can to meet these deadlines. And occasionally, you have to go back to the applicant and see if we can get voluntary agreement to have a little bit more time to work through issues. And frankly, most of the time, applicants are willing to work with staff on that as long as we're making progress and everybody's acting in good faith. So I don't feel like this puts us in an imminent threat of legal liability. It just makes it harder for the staff to get through the process and for applicants to get through the process in a timely manner and to do it the right way. So I kind of agree with what staff has already said. The biggest reason for doing this sooner as opposed to later would just be this will be a smoother process once we're able to get to a new code.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could you please introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, I should have done that at the outset. My name is Ken Fellman, and my colleague Colleen McCroskey is also on the Zoom with us today. We have been working with planning staff and legal staff for a number of years on moving forward with bringing the code up to date. And for some of you that I haven't worked with before, I've been fortunate to have kind of a longer standing relationship with the county. I've worked with the county and some of your prior staff members going back probably more than 10 years on cable franchising and other telecommunications issues. So we're happy to be a part of this process and help out as best we can.
Thank you. He's our legal advisor.
Thank you. Commissioner Mencer, go ahead, sir, do you have any questions?
So if I understand you saying that some of the concerns that were raised were not, you know, outside the federal guidelines or whatnot. So I'm wondering about in this memo, they refer to a code in Langley, Washington. I didn't have a chance to look at it, but they're saying that it addresses their concerns and complies with all federal law. So is that, what's the disconnect there?
I was not able to review the code that they provided as an example. But during this review process, if we look at other jurisdictions and their code that does not follow the way that we're implementing our code, the way that we're drafting our code, some of the reasons are because they're smaller jurisdictions and wireless providers aren't attempting to implement facilities there, and so they have not been challenged. Ken, do you want to elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, you know, I think, I'm not familiar with the Langley code. I know that we, earlier on in the Planning Commission process, we got a memo that probably listed or provided excerpts from 10 or 15 different codes. And when we started looking into those, some of them were misquoted, some of them had some of the things that some of the proponents wanted, but also had a number of things that they opposed. And it was sort of taking things piecemeal out and therefore out of context. And as Kate just mentioned, there are some communities, and I'm not saying that Langley is one, but we did see a number of communities where we actually reached out to the legal counsel in those communities who acknowledged that they were adopting provisions that they knew to be contrary to the federal regulations. But they felt that the community was so small that it was unlikely the industry was going to come there anytime soon to do any deployment. And if they did, they would deal with those legal issues when they could. And then lastly, the other thing we found out in talking to some of the legal counsel in these other communities, in addition to having some of the provisions that some of the proponents wanted, there was also a catch-all at the end that said, "But if any of this violates state or federal law, the county manager or the city manager, if it was a municipality, has the ability to waive the requirement." So it was sort of putting in language that everybody knew that was violating the federal standards because it made them feel better. And then saying, "But there's a staff person who can unilaterally waive that if enforcing it would violate the law." And I know that your staff, and frankly, I agree with this, that agrees that that's not a good way to make policy. So what I would want to do is before we come back to you with a public hearing on this, is to look at some of the, you know, any of the more recent citations of other communities and what they're doing, and get a better comprehensive view of what they're doing, and then be able to respond to you specifically on those jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. Because I mean, I'll just say that there are things, when I became Commissioner, that I knew a lot about, and there are things that I knew a little about, and there are things I know nothing about. This is something I know nothing about, literally absolutely nothing. Which is why I think we took the unusual step of having a stakeholder group. When we were hearing concerns, we couldn't figure out how to manage them or to assess them without getting way down into the weeds, you know, that the board wasn't the time or place for us to do that. So we had the stakeholder group, which is a process I haven't seen in any other issue come before me in my four years on the board. And then it's concerning to have not only the Minority Report of the Planning Commission, but the stakeholder group themselves, two separate groups. And I personally know people in both of these groups and their, you know, that their truthfulness or integrity telling me that they believe that their suggestions were dismissed without due diligence or not, you know, recommending that they go back and be more thoroughly evaluated. That was the whole point of having that stakeholder group, was to not get a comment like that, is to have a thorough review of provisions that I don't have any basis or context for understanding what is the right policy. So I'm really stumped on this one, in terms of what ought to be done. I'll just lay that out. I don't know what I should do, what I should vote, what the process ought to be. Because I thought we had done, I thought we had taken extra procedural steps and safeguards to lead me down somewhere where I could feel on firmer ground. And I feel on less firm ground than when we started.
So I'm waiting on my turn.
I'm going to echo on, this is something where I have no idea. Like, this is definitely one of the topics where, you know, I really don't know much about. And I agree with Commissioner Mencer, when the stakeholder group came forth, right? And the Planning Commission also made that recommendation for a stakeholder. I was like, okay, we're going to get a little bit more of a firmer response on it. And just looking through this, and you know, I'm getting kind of a different, and I know Eric Casino is here, the Chair of the Planning Commission. So Eric, I'm going to put you on the spot again, if you don't mind coming forward. And maybe do you mind giving us a little bit of an overview of some of the discussions that happened?
Well, I think probably one of the most important things to say right off the bat is that just because there was not agreement doesn't mean that people weren't heard. And with three stakeholder groups and a whole bunch of work sessions and a lot of consulting and diligent staff, just because we didn't come to agreement on it doesn't mean that these folks weren't heard. And so I'm sorry that sometimes people don't always get what they want. I've been on that end of things many a times, but I believe that all voices were heard.
So, I mean, and again, that's a good point. Because I would have been totally, you know, the frustration that I expressed a few minutes ago, I wouldn't have had any of that frustration if it was just a divided opinion. If it was like, you know what, we went through these seven elements and we decided that these three had validity, and we did this, and these four, no. But what's frustrating me, and maybe I'm not getting an accurate, you know, characterization of the process, but what I'm hearing is they felt that attention wasn't given, that people weren't heard in a sense. You know, like, I mean, to say that they don't think, you know, that the stakeholder group was to give, like, due consideration to the various community concerns, whether they're off the rails or outside the scope or whatever. So that's why there's a disconnect for me. It's not just that you got, I mean, you're saying, "Everybody was heard, we just didn't agree." They're saying, "We weren't heard." And so one of those is not accurate, one of them is accurate. I mean...
It's really hard to say that they weren't heard when we had three stakeholder groups and multiple meetings on it, and lots of discussion. I just, we were not able to agree on a lot of those things. And I think a lot of things that we were not able to agree on were also things that were outside of what our scope was. There was a portion of people that wanted us to be the test case on challenging some of these federal laws. And I was not comfortable moving forward that direction personally, and the rest of the Planning Commission agreed with me. And so it's not that we didn't hear that, it's we just didn't agree with it. And I should also mention that I did invite the author of the Minority Report to show up in the gallery today too, if he needed to voice anymore. I don't see him. I mean, it would be great to hear from him directly, what he thought wasn't heard by everybody. But I thought we heard everything. I believe we heard everything.
I would say thank you, Planning Commission Chair. Get on the big piece of it, it's the sideboards. The federal regulations have a box of limitations of what we can consider. And so if there are, Commissioner Mencer, if there's a statement of feeling dismissed, it's because it wasn't within the parameters of the scope of what we have influence over. And that was really, you know, part of the stakeholder group was to help engage with the folks that had concerns over the bigger federal legislation. But it has parameters. And within those parameters, we have very little wiggle room, as it were. And I think that what you're reading there is frustration with overarching federal legislation. But our codes and ordinances are very limited with what we can do and act. And so that's kind of this trickle-down that we're working to get.
So can I ask, I mean, the Minority Report, the stakeholder memo is pretty high level, but the Minority Report is very specific, and they identify, I think, eight elements. And so are nine. So you're telling me that all nine elements identified here would not be, don't fall within this, like, what authority remains to us locally? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking. They talk about noise reduction efforts, setback requirements, sizing differences, and proximity to homes, certain process and public notification parameters for impactful wireless facility permits, are all, I mean...
So the Planning Commission had those conversations?
Yeah.
And came up with the recommendation of 5.3. So each one of those was discussed in the Planning Commission?
And some of it was, it just, this was not the place for it. Like, we have noise controls in different parts of the code. We have permitting timelines in other parts of the code. So to come up with special rules just for wireless stuff, or noise, or timelines, or something like that, didn't make any sense to us.
I see a part here on noise emissions, though, on 20.33.16. So testing of facilities for higher noise emissions. Yeah, and I'm sorry if I seem a little lost. This is just a topic where I feel like out of my depth completely. And, you know, and just kind of like, just reading through this, it's still like, okay, I'm hearing like three different stories. So I'm going to go ahead and I guess go back to the basics and let's talk about the stakeholder committee, and who was a part of that? Let's start with that.
Go for it. So there were four community members, two wireless representatives, one from Verizon and one from AT&amp;T. There were two Planning Commissioners, and then there were our consultants, Kenneth, Colleen, and myself.
How were the four community members chosen?
They were, let me think. I believe there was a Planning Commission meeting where some people were suggested, and the Planning Commissioners agreed on who staff should reach out to. We also received a letter from interested community members before that, so we already had a list to go off of.
So we invited people that had interest in this topic to participate in, and the Planning Commission chose from that group. And as back, sorry to interrupt, as the county manager's statement earlier, this is about setting a public hearing. So if you want more information, that will be a good time to receive it. This isn't about asking for a decision today. We can also come back and provide more information on what the topic is. It's been going on for a while. So it's understandable to know that, you know, there's been hopscotches over the past multiple years, different staff, different times. So understood, we can bring back more if the board would like.
So with the public hearing that we set, right? Because usually we have to choose, like, which public, like, which one are we set, like, what's the code that we're going to be putting out there for people to have a public hearing on? What you're asking today is for us to make a recommendation on which one to publish? Are we going to go with the staff recommendation, which is the same as the Planning Commission recommendation? Or are we going to go with something different?
Some one recommendation.
There's the stakeholder and...
That is a perspective, but the code itself is one recommendation, single.
Right, I'm happy to chime in on that. We have one draft code. It is our Planning Commission recommended version by the majority. If the board would like us to expand the scope of this project beyond updating the code to be consistent with federal regulations and look into some of these additional stakeholder requests, we would need to do that before we request a public hearing so that we can have a separate version reflecting that in code language that we could take to a public hearing.
Maybe based on what I'm hearing from, is from the two board members, I think it may be prudent for staff to come back prior for you to consider setting up a public hearing. To help out, bring it to you, start from the beginning. What the federal regulations are and how this code, get a little more into the details and the minutia. Because I see a little bit of your hesitation. Because I see a little bit of your hesitation in terms of very complex, this is the first time you heard, you really don't have a lot of elements to make an informed decision whether you'd like to set a public hearing. I think that would be my suggestion at this point, is to bring another briefing, it will be just explaining the overall context, federal law, requirements within the federal law, and how this proposed code change aligns to the federal law.
Well, I, you know, for my, I don't want to get into the minutia of it, because I feel, I feel like the Planning Commission has done that. I mean, I feel like, you know, this is one of the subjects where we have to rely on our Planning Commission, because they're getting into kind of the nitty-grittiness of it. But?
Well, Ken, outline some information that I'd like to see, just to know, I mean, you know, and I get, I understand, I understand exactly what he laid out. Maybe some jurisdictions are taking an aggressive tack, either hoping it never comes back to bite them, or they want to test federal law, and maybe that's not where we want to be. I'm not saying that I want to be in either of those boxes. But to know, but, you know, if some of these things really are outside or in, I'd like to hear if there's jurisdictions that have adopted elements that are contrary to federal law, in Ken or staff's estimation, and sort of be able to chew on that a little bit. And we did have a briefing, like, along the lines of what you have just outlined in the past, I do remember it.
Yeah. But I think it's been so long.
Confusing enough that we, well, it's been so long, and it was confusing enough that we were like, let's get a stakeholder group to work on this. So I'm not, I'm not certain that that's going to resolve everything that we've got.
Commissioner Edwards?
Ah, boy. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can.
We've had a fair amount of information over, I'm going to say, the last three years, I think, on this topic. And I'm, I guess I'm not against hearing more information, it's just that I think that we're obligated to do the right thing. I believe council is providing us with the right direction. I don't think I want to put a get-out clause in the policy just to make everybody feel good, because some of these decisions are kind of tough, I have to say. If we, if we're going to, we're never going to make everybody in the community happy, I don't think. And I really do think that this has been hammered out pretty well by our staff and the Planning Commission. So if I was to get a second vote, I'm ready to move forward with the setting a hearing at this point myself. I'm not going to break my pick on it, obviously. If my seatmates feel they need more information, that's okay, too. But I am prepared to move forward should there be a second vote on that issue. Thanks.
So it is 1:33, and we're always at the brink of time with this. And for me, I'm inclined to kind of follow, because this is a topic I feel like even with a million follow-up briefings, I'll still be out of my depth on this. But I want to be respectful, Commissioner Mensah, you have some follow-up questions that I feel have the merit to be heard. And so we'll schedule a follow-up briefing for this, and then after that, I'll be setting a meeting, I know, with staff and trying to get more information on it. And then from there, we'll go ahead and set this public hearing.
We'll work on that briefing, commissioners. And at the end of that briefing, I may ask the board, do you feel comfortable enough to set a public hearing?
Yeah. Okay, it is 1:34. Yeah, we are adjourned.